Good evening. Welcome to the May 30th, 2017, meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Here.
Commissioner Coin? Coin, it actually says coin. Sorry. Commissioner Conley?
He's here.
They pranked my file because I've been on vacation. Let's start again. How about Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
This actually says Meredith Pietro. I apologize. Commissioner Plard?
I'm here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Oh, Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
And Mayor Campana?
Here. Thank you.
Next we come to approval of the agenda. Commissioner Baldini?
Your Honor, I would like to add number 10 under New Business Resolution of Necessity, 1318 Prescott Avenue.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Okay, we don't need a vote. That will be item number 10.
You have to approve the agenda.
Okay. Could we have a, thank you. Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Conley?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed?
That passes 7-0. We come to announcements. Three weeks ago, this community tragically lost State Representative John Kivela to his addiction disease. John was a friend and dedicated public servant to the many, many people here in this community, in his district, and in Lansing. He served on the local Board of Zoning Appeals, the City Commission for six years, four years of which were mayor, and five years as a state representative. He's a well-liked legislator who had many accomplishments in Lansing and still maintains his close ties to the city of Marquette. His loss leaves a large void for his family and the Marquette community. Could you please join me in bowing your head in a moment of silence as we remember John Kivela? Thank you. A minor announcement. This podium is not working today. Everything will be discussed over at the podium to my right, which is over here. Next we come to boards and committees. Tonight, we're welcoming one new member. That would be Michael Larson. Mike, if you could meet me at this podium?
Again, glad to meet you.
Thank you.
Mike has agreed to serve on the Planning Commission. I believe you have an MPA in administration, so that'll come in helpful in serving on the commission. We thank you for volunteering, serving time for the city. I'd like to present you with this pin. It's the Marquette pin, where proudly it identifies you as doing volunteer work for the city. So again, I thank you very much for stepping up and helping out the city.
Thank you.
Would you care to say a few words?
Yeah.
Quick?
Sure. My name is Michael Larson, lifelong UP'er from Ishping. I've been living in Marquette for the last several years, and I'm happy to step up. And I always had an interest in local government, and I think, you know, starting with the Planning Commission is the appropriate place to kind of get your feet wet.
You think you've already taken your role, so we don't need the old break?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, we have two reappointments. One, first one is Walt Anderson to the Traffic Parking Advisory Board for a term ending 5/30 of 2020, and Michael Reed to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending 6/1, 2020. Do I have a motion? Commissioners Reynolds?
I move that we reappoint Walt Anderson to the Traffic Parking Advisory Board for a term ending May 30th, 2020, and Michael Reed to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending 6/1, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Cam Benzi?
I'll support.
Any discussion?
None.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? That passes 7-0. Next, we come to our one and only public hearing of the evening. This public hearing is the Single Lot Special Assessment Roll Number 584. City Clerk, if we could have the background, please?
Thank you, sir. Background. Chapter 40, Section 40-21 of the City Code requires that when an improvement shall have been made by the city upon or in respect to any single premises, the expense of which is chargeable against such premises and the owner thereof under the provisions of this chapter and is not of that class required to be prorated among several lots and parcels of land in a special assessment district. An account of the cost to be charged to the owner shall be reported to the city treasurer, who shall immediately bill the owner if known. The City Code further states that when the city treasurer determines that a number of properties have outstanding bills for a sufficient time, the treasurer shall notify the city assessor, who shall prepare a single lot assessment roll and schedule a public hearing before the City Commission on that roll. Impacted property owners on the attached list have received notifications of the time and place of this hearing in accordance with Section 40-21 of the City Code. Fiscal effect: $1,478.63 plus accruing interest and penalties. Recommendation: Following the public hearing, confirm Single Lot Special Assessment Roll Number 584 and authorize the mayor to sign the warrant. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to address the commission on this issue, this item, now would be your time. You have three minutes. We would need name, address, city, or township. Does anybody wish to address the commission on this topic? Anyone? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that the City Commission confirm the Single Lot Special Assessment Roll Number 584 and authorize the mayor to sign the warrant.
Is there a second? Commissioner Baldini?
Support.
Comments? Any? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Tonight, we have two presentations. The first presentation is the Marquette Senior High School Figure Skating State Team Champions. If I could have the skaters, please meet me at the podium and line up there, please. Start here and just go that way. Do we have the coach here?
Yep.
Where are you? Oh, okay, all right. One coach, two coaches? Just one? Hang on a minute. Okay, tonight, we'd like to honor the coaches and members of the Marquette Senior High School Figure Skating Team because on March 25th and 26th of this year, this team won their second consecutive state championship in the individual points category. In previous years, they've also won four, five, or six, I believe, but this is a second in a row. And they also won the B-Team Team Event for the first time by any UP school. So this is very big, very important. And it's just that whenever you win a state title, of course, it represents your school very well, but it also represents the community of Marquette very well. So for this, we're, please, present you with certificates of appreciation. Let me read it. This is a certificate of achievement presented to the individual skaters. 2017 State of Michigan Individual State Champions and 2017 State of Michigan B-Team Event Champions. I have Commissioner Mayor Pro Tem Baldini is going to read the name, and I'll present you with the certificate. Parents, if you want to take pictures, you're welcome to come right up here and do that. Just plow your way up here. Tom, let's go first. Who you got?
Let's get the cameras ready.
Let's get the cameras ready, all right. And of course, this will be on video. Tomorrow afternoon, you'll be able to look it up and see yourself. It's going to be right here. You're on it all the time, so.
Claire Valkowski. You're not an alphabetical artist.
Yeah.
Just come up. Okay, thank you.
Claire, here you go. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Jasmine Burke?
Jasmine, congratulations.
Kelsey Freeman?
Kelsey, congratulations.
Mary Ann Davis?
Mary Ann, congratulations.
Grace Charmley?
Grace, congratulations.
Emily Helgren?
Emily, congratulations.
Emily Johnson?
Emily, congratulations.
Haley Matty?
She's not here.
Okay. Faith Perilla, or Perella, as we would say up the road in the west.
Faith.
Congratulations.
Sidney Raymond?
Sidney, congratulations.
Delaney Trenell?
Trenell.
Not here also? Okay, all right. And Janelle Voss. Voss. Okay.
Janelle?
Coach Jamie Michael. One for you also. Thank you.
Jamie. Is it fair to say Haley is from Nagani? Did I see that? The one and only?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations to her. That's hard to do, extra work on her part. Well, thank you again. We appreciate what you've done, what you have done, and hopefully next year, we'll get you back here again for another presentation. Would anybody care to say anything? Coaches, any, just anything? No? No? Yes?
I don't know. I'm very proud of our, I'm very proud of the girls. They're very focused and quality, quality won us our championship.
Good.
It was great.
Thank you very much. She wasn't here. And this is for the team.
There, thank you so much.
Okay, hey, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Yep, thank you for coming. Tom? Are we in?
Because we did some match up.
Thank you for having the girls. Thank you.
Okay, we come to our second presentation of the evening. It will be the UP Health System Marquette General Hospital Update. We have Judy Watson Olsen, who is the Chair of the UP Health System, and we have Stephen Salior. Correct me on that. Salior, thank you, who will be presenting. Judy?
Good evening. We're glad to be with you again to give you an update on our important hospital projects and the progress that's being made. Mayor, you already introduced Stephen Salior, who's our Chief Operating Officer, and Mary Armihoe, who is here, who is our, one of our associate administrators, and they're both here to help answer questions today as Brian Sinott is traveling. First, I'd like to give you an update on the new hospital, which we broke ground on almost one year ago to date from today. Like me, you've probably been seeing the physical structure going up. I don't think I have to tell anybody. Drive down there and see if you can see the hospital going up, but we all know the hospital is going up. But the visual progress is impressive, and it's very exciting. We currently have about 300 workers on site daily, depending on the actual work going on. Some days, we have a little more or a little less. Roughly 85 to 90 percent of the workers are union members, which I think is a good news thing here in the Upper Peninsula, and more than 60 percent of the workers are native to the Upper Peninsula. We're making great progress and expect the steel framework to be fully built in the coming weeks. The first floor interior framing is now about 75 percent complete. The second floor is approximately 30 percent complete, and crews have started laying out framing for the third floor. Work is in progress for the parking garage. Garage footings are being put into place, and the framework for the garage is scheduled to begin going up in mid-June. We have concrete flooring completed on the second through the fifth floors, and the sixth floor will be poured in early June. In the coming weeks, we will have a temporary closure of the bike trail, so asphalt can be poured, but we don't know the exact date of that at this time. We do know that Oberstar will be working with the city to coordinate this. And I'm really proud to share that we have now gone 310-plus days without a safety event at the site with loss, neither loss of time nor accident. Our Skanska-Klassener crews are working fast and hard, but most importantly, they are working safely. And it's really interesting, I went down and visited the site early in the project, and right away in the morning, all of the workers do exercises together to start out the day, and they go over and report what's going to happen that day, what the primary objectives are for the day. And that's something that Skanska has been doing for a long time, and it really helps to bring great, great quality and great safety to their sites. The project is on schedule, and we are still on target for a completion date in late 2018. I know the last time I was here, I was talking about that we were lucky with the weather at that time. Well, I think we were really lucky with the weather a lot of the winter, so it really helped the project. LifePoint has secured a partner to assist with the reuse of the existing property, and I know that's, will be good news. The company will be reaching out to the city to obtain information and guidance regarding the existing property by the end of June. So that's pretty much what we have as highlights about the work site today. I'd also like to highlight another effort that's taken place at UP Health System Marquette. We have developed a patient-family advisory board, and these boards can be found throughout the LifePoint system of hospitals, and it's something new that we've been able to bring to Marquette. We've launched the Patient-Family Advisory Board in April of this year. The board provides patients' perspectives to help guide our hospital leadership team in continuously improving the patient experience and ensuring quality care at every access point. Our Patient-Family Advisory Board is comprised of 10 patient-family advisors from within the community and four to six hospital staff. All of the advisors are former patients or family members of our patients. The Patient-Family Advisory Board elected their own co-chairs from the serving members to lead their monthly meetings. The advisory board will work together with hospital leadership and staff to ensure that patients receive the best experience and care possible. Whenever we can, we will be incorporating their ideas and feedback into our daily operations. So that was one of the things I wanted to bring and highlight today. If there are any questions about either the new hospital construction or the Patient-Family Advisory Board, we would be happy to answer those now, and I have as my great assistance and all knowledge about the hospital right here to help with that. So, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Judy. Commissioners, would there be any questions? Commissioner Frazier?
Judy, can you have like a grand opening when you install the front door of the hospital, maybe?
I'm sure there's going to be a grand opening. I don't, well, I can assure you that it will be really grand. We'll make sure that people are invited and that the community knows about it, and I think actually it's going to be quite interesting for us to watch as the hospital moves from one location to the other and continues to care for patients. You know, that's an interesting thing in itself and will be a unique experience for Marquette. I know we combined hospitals at one time, but we've never literally taken the whole hospital and moved it to a new location. The one good thing I can say about that is it's not very far away, so I like that. Any other thing you'd want to add to that? Stephen or Mary? Okay.
That's good. I remember talking to one of the Duke Loveport members, and I said, "I got a friend that runs a moving company, could help you move beds from one place to the other." He said, "Boy, I like this guy. He's willing to save me a few bucks on beds."
Great. Thanks, Peter.
Commissioner Conley?
Don't have a question. I just have some positive reinforcement. I drive by often, and I Glock, and I see all the trucks out in front, and that means that there's a lot of people working on it, and those are good jobs. I'm glad to hear that they are union jobs, that they're being paid at prevailing wage, and that they're employing our fellow community members. So, thank you. And of course, as the new hospital is completed, there'll be more good jobs inside.
Right. Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Baldini?
Just a couple of questions. You said the hospital's going up, and it's interesting to see big cranes in the city, and people who are just coming back for summer comment on, saying it's looking like one of these industrial cities or something. But you're also going to be building a parking ramp. Any other structures there right now? I know in the future, there's some planned.
Well, the medical office building, you can start to see that going in place. Mary, do you want to come over here at the mic?
You at the mic?
Yeah, sure. So you'll see the main hospital structure going up, and right in front of the hospital, we'll have our medical office building. So that'll house our cancer center, our cardiovascular services, and our brain and spine. And then right along to the right, if you're facing the hospital, will be, I mean, to the left, will be the parking garage structure. So those will be the two buildings, as well as the parking garage structure.
There's also, obviously, people are anxious to see what it's going to look like, the exterior, and there was, I think we had a briefing on that some time ago, but being briefed and seen at our two different events, and people are also excited and interested in the landscaping and how it's all going to fit in. So, but good luck with it. Thank you. I did just ask a question, that with all those workers on site, the people who have the food trucks were inquiring as to whether they could come onto the property and provide food, and I said, "That wasn't our response. That wasn't something, we had jurisdiction over and to call one of you." Okay?
Yeah, that's fine. They could actually reach out to me, and I can work with the construction project manager and see if we can have the food trucks go on site.
Thank you.
Mary's our leader for the hospital construction, so she's a good person for you to keep in mind if you do have questions that come to you.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Well, I just have a few questions about the people end of the hospital, and I'm glad to see that there's a Patient-Family Advisory Board that has formed, you know, that guides the leadership team, because I know that there, there's people out there that just, they don't trust the hospital, or they are taking their business elsewhere. Have you seen that decline, or is that still a concern for you, that our community members aren't staying here for their service?
I appreciate that question or that concern. I'm Stephen, by the way, the Chief Operating Officer. I will tell you that as administrative team, as leaders within the hospital, we take that very serious. We completely dedicate our lives, really, to benefiting our communities and really the patients that we serve. So when we hear concerns such as that, we take it very seriously, and that's one reason we created that advisory board. We want to know what the community's thinking, what they're saying. We want to hear feedback on our, you know, the satisfaction that they receive whenever we render care. I think really the best way I can answer that is that we just genuinely care. We're actively seeking advice from the community, and when we receive the advice, we literally create action plans. We, all the way from the top leadership, all the way to the bedside care, we roll out new objectives, new plans to meet the needs of our patients. And once again, we just genuinely care.
I had a conversation with a few gentlemen before the meeting, and their concern, they're in the trades industry, is that with the Empire Mine layoff, closure, maybe indefinitely, maybe not, they're trying to keep as many working people here, skilled trades people here as possible. They just had 600 students go through their ISD, that's our local school district, Intermediate School District Job Fair. These are people that they have recruited to hopefully get into the building trades and stick around and be able to take some of these jobs. But they also said they're concerned right now that some of the local work on the new hospital might go to other firms now outside of the UP, outside of Michigan. And I think they wanted to just reiterate that because they've had a decent relationship with you, you have hired a lot of local labor, you gave us those statistics, that they reinforce to their workers to use your hospital. And so there's a trust there, and I guess, would they ask me if I would reiterate tonight is that to keep that trust, if there's any way that you can keep as much business as possible to these workers, because there are a lot of them right now that aren't working?
Well, and Sarah, thank you for putting it that way. One of the things I checked on today was to see what the employment was, and the employment today for UP Health System Marquette is 2,127 people. That's the largest employer in the Upper Peninsula in the private sector. It's really important to us to, and for our community and for the Upper Peninsula, to keep that employment very strong. And the way each of us can help keep that strong is to choose to have our care here. And I know that it's, it takes both sides. You know, to keep the care here, we have to provide the best service we can and open our arms to people and make them feel welcome and take care of them like they are our family member or our neighbor. It takes both, but we also need our community, and I say not just the Marquette community, but across the Upper Peninsula, hopefully, to see that UP Health System Marquette is our tertiary care center for the region. And to help it be strong, we need to use it, and we need to have it be our choice for care. So I would just say, when I've had my knee done, I had it done here. Why would I go someplace else when we have such wonderful people here? And for me, the results were great, and I'm golfing, and I'm biking, and I skied this winter, only on Ridge Run, but I skied this winter, you know, and, but I had it done right here. this winter, you know, and, but I had it done right here. And I'm from Gwin, so I came to Marquette for my care. And I think that's the thing that is going to reinforce and help stem outmigration. Because one of the other things I heard the other day, talking to, actually it was Sally, your wife, and it was about outmigration. And she said, "Outmigration has always been an issue." Because she worked for the hospital like for 20 years, and it has been. But it's especially more difficult now because of competition. And with healthcare and the way healthcare is evolving nationally, the competition continues to be stronger and stronger. So we no longer can sit and just say, "Well, it doesn't make any difference whether we have our care here." It's like, if you want to have a grocery store in Gwin, I better shop in that grocery store in Gwin. That doesn't mean I don't come to Marquette to shop, but if I want milk, I better have milk right there in Gwin, and I better buy it there, or I may not have the grocery store. So that, we all need to think about shopping locally, and that also means getting our healthcare locally, if we at all can. And so our challenge is to provide the best door and the friendliest door that people can come through and the highest quality door. That's our job. And then I think the job of the community is to give us a chance. You know, and if you had a chance in the past, and maybe things, you know, weren't perfect, give a chance again and at least talk to people and see. Because I think the atmosphere is really progressively moving forward. And we get a lot of energy out of building a new hospital, but it's the people and the care that make the difference. Not that, the building will be great, but it's really about the people and the care that we give.
I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, how do we fix this? Because the city is in this for 30 years with you too. I mean, there's a big contract out there, an agreement that we signed, so, you know, how do we regain that trust? And right now, one thing that I think is missing, there's not enough communication. And that even means sometimes your layoffs, you know? It's not reported very well. But sometimes just reporting it as it is and coming clean and being honest goes a long way in this community. I was born and raised here, and I think people want to hear about it. And sometimes even if they don't like it, they can understand it, but we don't have that right now. And so that, I think, turns a lot of negative behavior, negative talk, and outmigration even more than probably in the past. So I guess that's my one, I guess, hope, is that somehow we get maybe some more community forums that you invite them in. But you really listen to what they have to say, because they can vote with their dollars, they can go somewhere else. None of us want that, or we're going to have an empty building and a lot of debt on our hands as a city. So I guess that's my main message, is how do we work on that trust and communication? Because I think that's key.
Well, and I appreciate that message from the commission. We'll take that back. Certainly, we have an aggressive marketing campaign ongoing. The hospital, a couple of years ago, you might have looked around the community and wondered, "Why isn't the hospital involved in this event?" Or, "Why isn't the hospital involved in this activity?" If you look today, you're going to find them in almost all health-related activities and many other community events that are going on. That's part of our, also being part of the community. One of the commitments that happened when our new administrative team came in was that they have to go out and want to go out and get involved in the community. And Mary's in my Rotary Club. And many of the other new administrators, you know, have joined other clubs in town because we need to be present in representing and talking to people. We'll take back, though, about the community forum. It's been a while since we've had one. It probably would be time to do that again and give this same update to the community. Yeah, and have it open. That'd be good. One other thing I'd just say about the layoffs is that, right now, there are no other layoffs planned. This was what we needed to do, and it primarily goes back to outmigration and a decline in the dollars coming in. So we, you know, we're sitting now where we think we can maintain for the year, right?
Can I just ask one more question about outpatient procedures and surgeries? It seems to be, you know, some of them that used to be in the hospital for a week or five days now, it's almost like they get you up walking and you're out the door within like 12 hours. So does that have an effect on revenue for hospitals, or is it actually kind of perceived as a better?
Sure, yeah. It depends upon the procedure, but there are standards of care per procedure. You'll find that some outpatient, you're out within a couple hours, some it's half a day, some it's the next day. So it really depends upon the procedure itself. But what I will tell you is we follow national best practice standards. So in some cases, you might have a patient who wants to stay longer in the hospital, but from a clinical standpoint, technically, they shouldn't. All right? They really should get up and move, and we encourage that. So there, you know, there might be that misnomer between the patient and then the physician on what's expected for the post-care and the rehab. But once again, I think what's important is we follow national best practice when it comes to standards of care.
And Stephen, hasn't the mix changed? Because outpatient has made a big difference, so outpatient is much...
Oh, absolutely. And so what you'll see, and this is nationally, there is a shift from inpatient care to outpatient, right? Just like there's more utilization at your house, right? So we actually encourage that. So the larger cases that were more impatient, that were, patients would stay three to seven days in the hospital, are now there are more minor cases, or the technology has allowed for quicker healing, and now you're only staying hours. So it's quite incredible.
I just wondered, Stephen and Mary, do you have cards you can leave with us?
Yes, we do.
Commissioner Conley.
Now I have a question. You talked about the outpatient, or the physician office building being oncology, cardiovascular, and neuro. Are there other physician practices that you'll be moving in? Like some of your family practice, pediatrics, nephrology, internal medicine, things like that?
So right now, as far as the medical office building, it will just be those three practices, but we're in the planning stage to figure out what we're going to do with a lot of our practices that are in the UPMC. And so, because a couple of those practices that are moving to the hospital, they'll have vacancy there. So it's really looking at, you know, what we can fit into those areas, and then possibly, what are we going to do for growth? So all of that right now is being put together as far as a plan, and then we will be announcing what we will be doing here and in the near future.
They're our second or third biggest taxpayer over there on Fair Avenue, so...
I'm sorry.
They are, the medical center is our second or third largest taxpayer. So just, we'll be sensitive and we'll be watching that, too.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Judy, question for you. On the Family Advisory Board, you have members that are serving terms. How long are their terms? How do you get them reelected? How do you change members?
I don't know if it's a year's term, but it's a one... Yeah, I think it's a one-year term, and then they go through like an interview process. And so if we open up a spot on the advisory board, then we are actually advertising to see if there's anyone interested in the community that can join that board.
And I know if I get this right, there were 30 applicants, and 10 then were finally selected to serve on the board.
Okay, good. That sounds appropriate. City manager has a question.
I don't have a question. I just thought I'd mention something. I had it on my notes for after the meeting, but I was contacted by the construction company today, and that bike path Judy you were talking about will be the beginning, beginning to pave it on June 5th through the 19th. So, because I asked about it, because I ride my bike there, and it bothered me, so...
All right, thank you. I told them somebody would ask that question. I didn't expect it from you, Mike.
I have skinny tires on my bike and those rocks are...
Well, Judy, we thank you and your group for coming tonight. We appreciate the update. I especially like the idea that you're having this Family Advisory Board. I think that tells the community that the hospital is concerned about providing a quality of care to the community. So that's, it's a good move on part of the hospital.
I know the board is very excited about it, and we'll be watching as the information comes out of that group and rolls back into the hospital. We'll be getting regular reports on that.
I think they need to be heard, so that's a very good move.
That's great. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope you come back again soon.
We will. I think in two months, unless you ask differently.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Next, we have our first public comment of the evening. Public comment is when you, citizens may address the commission, or they may reserve time to speak on a new business item coming up. I'm going to open public comment. You have three minutes to speak. We need name, address, home address, city or township. Would anyone wish to address the commission?
Frank Jeff Berido, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. May 8th and tonight, the lectern camera was down again. This podium is not conducive to public comment. Later in the meeting, the podium appeared on camera for minutes with no one there. Whether it's the equipment, audio, or video, or the technician, the record of our meetings has been pitiful for too long. Please fix this expensive equipment and train someone to provide close-ups of the members and to set the microphones, buy a mixing board if needed. Regarding the Chamber of Commerce presentation, it's interesting to note that they held 157 events for a total of 516 attendees, only 3.3 people per function. This board is commended for the due diligence it exercised lately on short-term rentals, fire inspections, and the north roundabouts. The improvement might boil down to the fact that those weren't who's-who items. Roundabouts are preferred or practical and should be installed when adjacent infrastructure is updated to maximize efficiency. Of concern was Ms. Campenzi's mention of a traffic study that indicated a traffic light was not warranted at Presque Isle and Wright. This means we've been stopped for at least 25 years, had our time wasted, and our vehicles depreciated for nothing by $150,000 light that wasn't needed, plus electricity and maintenance. I never agreed with Mr. Campana more than on the cost of a traffic light, much less for an intersection where one's not needed. This sounds like an alleged conspiracy between municipalities and auto repair shops. Why else would we install an unneeded traffic light? Well, there may be other reasons, but time doesn't allow for explanations of. An unfortunate incident occurred May 8th when a majority of our members and even the attorney apparently lost track of two simultaneous motions. An orderly meeting was interrupted when multiple conversations broke out in the audience. A former commission whispered something in my ear to the effect of, "Wow." An occasional mix-up in a complex item is understandable, but the confusion persisted far too long. In addition to those minutes of confusion, members talked to each other during the discourse, which invites the exact confusion that occurred. Our members are reminded to focus their attention on whoever has the floor to avoid missing something important. Also on May 8th, two citizens independently criticized this board for, again, not providing needed depictions, this time on Seventh Street properties. Mr. Campana apparently cared less. He immediately asked for a motion anyway, even though the appraisal was done from outside the house. Mr. Frazier and Palord accommodated him. The latter agreed the information should be there, but it's between private parties and the city, he said. Provide depictions anyway. Yes, this board had the sense to renegotiate the value, but for management to press a recommendation this far without a full appraisal based on a 1980 law was egregiously irresponsible. Did management not realize this was alleged equivalent of stealing? Right is right and wrong is wrong.
Here in Malanquinen, 8 Marquette Drive, here in the city of Marquette. On a more happier note and a positive note, I had the distinct pleasure and honor of being at the Borlai and Power last week and physically touching the warmed-up engines on Tuesday of last week. And on Wednesday, there was the first smoke. What an incredible feat of engineering marvel that we have here in the city of Marquette. Two of the three engines already have been fired to the beginning of one megawatt. Perfect transition from one to the other, from the steam plant to the Borlai and Power facility. Of course, good part of that is not only the engineers that are here in the Marquette area, but the Finnish engineers from Finland themselves. I was able to communicate with those gentlemen, and what an incredible feat of technology that we have here in the city of Marquette. So we should be pleased as punch that we have that first facility here that's going to be functioning and producing electricity within the next 30 days. Also, the solar panel systems are going really well, and 180 of those panels have been sold already, out of some 200. So that's going really, really well, and that's going to get started on construction once the Vortala engines are put in place and some of the outbuildings that are taking that space will be removed. Where else do we have this kind of cooperation between the city, the Borlai and Power, and all the municipalities to make all of this thing happen? And we have reliable 24/7 power at any given time. Of course, the hospital that just made their presentation, they're probably are going to be the largest consumer of electricity with their new facility. I've been told somewhere between five to 10 megawatts. That's a lot of electricity. And so, again, proud as punch to be part of this community and have the ability to take these special tours and see how this plant is being put together. Again, thank you for your cooperation, and thank you for allowing me to speak and running the city in a fabulous manner.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in Marquette. I guess I'm going to be quick on this, three minutes, because I've got a lot of things to say, and three weeks between meetings is a lot of time to put it together. So first, thanks for getting the web back up and running. There was a live feed before I came in. There was a recorded version of last week's meeting online next day after I mentioned it, so thank you very much. Same time, there's a story in the paper saying Charter Communications is no longer going to be providing it. So I'm looking forward to hearing how we're going to be saving, archiving, and recording these meetings in the future. Okay, that's first. Second is, on that note, there is a presentation about a way to bring money in for creative gig economy. Technically, I've been part of it before. We don't have a gig economy here in Marquette. It's not like the Aubries or the restaurants in town are buying a lot of table toppers or getting new menus by professional design agencies. There's certain things that happen. At the same time, I say that, and I think the website and the improvements to the city website and these communications could all be part of that new creative program. I don't know if that means I start a business and you guys contract out for personal services or professional services, or if that means that you, as a city, employ and hire three or four people to do everything from maps to putting up the agenda items, to making sure they're Google-friendly. Right now, you can't, if you type up Marquette City Commissions, you don't get any of them. Or you get the old version of it, you don't get the new agendas. All right, my time is running out. I have five more things to say here. I would like to speak on item number 6I, 7, and number 8, please. I'd also like to, I guess here, I didn't remember his... Oh, for eminent domain, this is the big thing. I would like to see us as a city, because this is our taxpayer money. I would like to see us, as a city, offer any eminent domain recipient three times the market value of whatever we're buying. I'd say that because you're asking somebody, like this woman pointed out, to move all of your countertops, all of your dressers, all of your... of your countertops, all of your dressers, all of your furnishings that you might have put into this home that are in the home, that won't go with the home to the new movement. So a market value price on a home to a market value price on another home similar size in our city requires a lot more of personal expenses than just straight up $180,000 or whatever it is to move. You have to hire people, you have to take time out of your day, there's a lot more. If we as a city could put into our requirements, a three times amount would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. I have a question for Mr. Luttenberger, you wish to speak on 6I and number 8? 6I is in the consent agenda. We do not speak to that, correct? So you're allowed, you can speak to it in the second public comment, but we don't take public comment on the consent agenda? Next, we do come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve? Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second? Do I have a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Any comments? This will be a roll call vote?
It will, but I don't think the consent agenda was amended. Was it?
No, it was not amended. Pete, Commissioner Frazier, you want to restate that?
I'll approve the consent agenda as written.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Support.
No comment? Roll call vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campenzi?
Can I ask a question, quick? On, I guess it'd be 6O, do we have any, I guess, legal, I don't know, affairs with that right now?
Can we discuss that at this point? City Attorney?
It's just like any other motion, a motion is made to approve and under discussion, anything can come up. I don't know what, I don't actually know what the question is, I don't understand it.
Not with these particular properties, this is the property that's, we obtained from the university.
It'd be yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baldini?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, that passes 7-0. We come to new business. We have four items on new business tonight. First item is the Fair Avenue reconstruction and Wilson Street upgrade. City Clerk, could you please give us the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, plans have been developed for the package reconstruction project of Fair Avenue and Wilson Street in accordance with prior planning commission and city commission approval, master plan and capital improvement plan requirements. The work will consist of replacement, extension of water main and laterals, sanitary sewer main replacement, extension, replacement of sanitary sewer laterals, storm sewer main replacement, extension, sidewalk replacement, extension, bike lane additions, Fair Avenue, reconstruction of the street structure and the associated pertinences per the plan limits. Plan limits are as follows, Fair Avenue from McClellan West to the city limits, Wilson Street from Ward Street to M553. Bids for the project were open on May 19th, 2017. Three contractors responded to our request for bids, the results are summarized below. Engineers estimate $1,859,251.2. Smith Construction, $1,357,533. Overstar Inc., $1,447,943.43. And Baco Construction, $1,624,231.06. Tabulation and checking of the bids found errors on the contractors' bids, errors were mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. Fiscal effect, the Fair Avenue reconstruction and Wilson Street upgrade projects were approved under the fiscal year 2016-17 budget. These projects will be part of the fiscal year 2016-17 bond package. Recommendation, award a contract for the package reconstruction project of Fair Avenue and Wilson Street to Smith Construction, Inc. in the amount of $1,357,533, based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Also, allow the city manager to use a 5% contingency for any unknown circumstances. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Plord?
I move that we award a contract for the package reconstruction project of Fair Avenue and Wilson Street to Smith Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,357,533, based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Allow the city manager to use a 5% contingency for any unknown circumstances.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Baldini?
I support.
Comments, any? Commissioner Plord?
Yeah, this is part of the capital improvement plan, and we as commissioners took a tour last year and saw the construction, why it was needed, so it's very clear in my mind why it's needed, and yeah, Your Honor, I'd be happy to hear what Mr. Luttenberger has to say.
I was hoping for 6I, 7, and 9.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear 7. Okay, tell me what you wanted again, 7, 8?
Nope, 7 and 9.
7 and 9, not 8.
Correct.
Mr. Luttenberger, if you want to take the podium?
Thank you, folks. Thank you, I'll make this short, this is really more or less a continuation of what I started out with on the gig economy. I'm flabbergasted, I guess is the best word, but I'm not surprised. Whenever bids like this come in, it seems like they would all map out, or whomever put the bid together would map out what and where and how they plan on doing it, not necessarily the guaranteed city final drawing of it. However, I would assume one of those are available as well. Those kinds of maps, I mean, Fair and Wilson Ave are two streets that, I mean, I live on the corner of Fair Ave, but Wilson Ave, I've never run across. And when I do, when I did drive down there today, it's required, yes. We need to redo that whole part of town. I mean, that, I'm not denying any one of these things, I'm not being critical of this motion. I'm trying to suggest that in the future, to help understand where we're going as a city, these are the kind of projects that, we could put together a whole book of maps of before and after, which would be extremely helpful, especially if we go online to say, here's what we're doing and here's what we want to do, here's fiscal year 19, here's fiscal year 7. All of those things are very possible. And on this Wilson Street upgrade, there's a lot of changes going on. The waterways, the sewer, the bike path, tremendous, except it seems like we don't have a map of all these new things that are going to be happening in our city. This is one of those where a bike path being continued, new asphalt being laid down, trust me, is definitely needed on that side of town. But I wonder if we can add this to, or try to include, larger project portions. Let us know, is this the third portion of this project? Is this the first portion of a larger fiscal year? And granted, if you follow along, it's easy to find out where these streets are and what the numbers all mean, but if you want a quick reference, in today's day and age, Google Maps, we can easily put a red dot on it and say, this is what we're talking about tonight. And that's kind of the thought, and if you need help, it would be great if we can turn to this new collaborative that the Chamber of Commerce is looking to set up and try to encourage photographic evidence and try to encourage the computer programmers to fulfill those requirements. And that could be a completely professional services contract, nobody needs to be hired. I prefer to see it as a city staff, that way we as city are employing more people, except I understand how that is a very, this project that I just described would be a perfect gig economy type of project. Those are the types I've worked on in the past. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Plord, did you have comment?
Yeah, this is a part of the capital improvement plan, and Mr. Luttenberger, if you go to the website, you'll find the capital improvement plan, and it was explained very, very well. As a matter of fact, I did the same thing you did. I had a chance to take a tour, find out exactly what was Ruth Fair Avenue and also Wilson Street and several other areas around the city. In fact, we're going to take a capital improvement tour again coming up in June. So we do get a chance to take a look at it, it is spelled on the capital improvement plan exactly why we're doing a particular area in the city as far as capital improvements are concerned, what section of that capital improvement this is and what's to come in the future. So the capital improvement plan is, goes over several years, as a matter of fact, so, and it's put together by city employees. And this kind of construction, Smith Construction came in with the lowest bid, and I'm a person that's not always going to go for the lowest bid simply because it's the lowest bid, but in this case, it's the right bid, and I think we should support it. That's why I made the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Baldini?
Just as a follow-up, staff has a point system that they use to determine what part of the city and what roads we're going to work on. I mean, it'd be nice if we were able to redo the city in the next 10 years, everything, but we can't. And in that evaluation, we look at the infrastructure under the road also. So it's, in that sense, that's how we set it up, and we'll have a budget, start our budget sessions next month or the month after, and in there, we will also have some new projects for the following year, if the money's there and obviously the need is felt, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Campenzi?
I did have a homeowner on the street say that he didn't need a sidewalk out in front of his house, and that many people didn't care if they actually had one, and I said, well, it would save us quite a bit of money, but, I said, you'd have to come to the meeting and talk to us or talk to staff. But currently, I don't believe that side of the road has a sidewalk on it, or the north side. I don't know if, we don't have any city engineer here tonight, but I thought that was just kind of interesting, people that aren't used to having sidewalks, you know, if we go through and put them all in, do they want them? If there is one on the other side of the road, I guess, as we get into our budget discussions, it's maybe something to revisit, but I did want to point that out.
Commissioner Baldini?
I mean, that's a thing that the planning commission gets into, and I think the city decides whether it wants curbs or it wants sidewalks, and I think we have a certain design for the city, and we do provide that. I mean, it'd be interesting to have a sidewalk for this house and not that house, and it'd be sort of interesting chaos, but I understand, if I don't want it, but it comes sometimes with the street, you know, so.
Commissioner Conley?
As we continue to develop our community as a walkable community, we need to put in sidewalks, even if we don't see a current need. We're putting in sidewalks for the next 50, 100 years, and it's very hard to come back and redo that project and put sidewalks in later. Now's the time. Other communities have made the mistake of saving a few bucks here by taking out the sidewalks, and then they're not walkable. And that's part of what we do. We're walkable. We're trying to attract people that live in walkable communities, we want that for ourselves, we want people to walk to the grocery store nearby. So I'm glad the sidewalks are in there, and I'll support this plan.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion, please say yes. Opposed? It carries 7-0. Come to our second new business item of the evening, which is professional services for the city of Marquette land development code project. City Clerk, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, through the city's strategic plan and fiscal year 2016-17 budget process, the city commission directed the update of all municipal land development codes, including the zoning, sign and fence ordinances, as well as the three form-based codes currently in use. On March 14th, 2017, community development staff released a request for proposals for qualified consultants to perform this work and received four proposals. Each proposal was reviewed by the Director of Planning and Community Development, Director of Community Services, City Planner and Zoning Administrator and Zoning Official. The results of the reviews are as follows. Consultant McKenna Associates, average score out of 191.75. Duncan Associates, Cota Metrics, 89.25. Placemakers LLC, 86.75. Pivot Planning and Design, 57.5. The two highest scoring proposals were further evaluated by the Director of Planning and Community Development and the City Planner through interviews with the applicants. Fiscal effect, the proposed cost for McKenna Associates is $73,000, with additional meeting attendance billed at a per-meeting fee and utilizing a UP-based subconsultant. Sufficient funds are available, $50,000 was targeted for this project in the fiscal year 2016-17 budget, and staff has secured an additional grant of up to $35,000 that may be used for aspects of this project, for a total of $85,000 that is available. Recommendation, approve the selection of McKenna Associates of Northville, Michigan for professional services for the city of Marquette land development code project. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. City Manager, did you wish to give us some additional information on this?
I'm just, I mentioned it in an email previously, but just so, to remind you that as part of this process, we plan to, would like to have the approval to also have the commission-appointed ad hoc committee to deal with this proposal as we move through it, through this planning process. And that, our goal would be to, once and if McKenna is approved, to hold a public forum on or about June 20th, to invite local developers, people that are interested, to attend and see if we can convince or seek interest in participating in the ad hoc committee. That committee also is going to, we're going to ask the commission to appoint at least two members, the planning commission to appoint at least two members, and then city staff will also participate with the idea of bringing different viewpoints into this process, whether it be about the zoning, about the code, about the actual process itself, the permitting and that kind of thing, to kind of put together a total package after this review is done. And correct me if I'm wrong, Dennis, but this process is about an 18-month process? Yes, it's about an 18-month process.
This ad hoc committee, could you give us a breakdown of who you want on it, how many you want on it?
Yeah, we'll do that at a future meeting, but as part of the discussion at this meeting, I wanted you just to be aware of that. At least two city commissioners, at least two planning commissioners. I'd like to have at least two people representing the developers or people who work in that field, and then city staff. Total number, what do we think, Dennis?
Around eight. We'd also like to have a BZA member.
Good, thank you. Okay, we need a motion to approve this item. Commissioner Baldini?
I would move that the selection of McKenna Associates of Northville, Michigan for professional services, recommend for professional services for the city of Marquette land development code project.
We need a second? Commissioner Reynolds? Discussion?
I've got, I took the opportunity and time to read through this, and I thought, Dennis, I thought they said 12 months, and that concerned me.
We had originally put in the proposal 12 months, and working with these firms, McKenna was originally 12 months, but then the other proposals we got back said 18 months. So when we did interviews and sat down face-to-face with them, we asked for an honest appraisal of what we were asking for, and McKenna felt they could do it within 12 months, but they wanted to back it out to more meet our timeline. A more honest, manage expectations timeline.
A more honest, manage expectations timeline as opposed to try and rush it.
I, I was just concerned that with everything else that we have going on, with the budget coming up and a whole series of other things, the 12-month was going to be pretty, quite demanding. I think they did a, an interesting job of taking each of their objectives and saying, "We're going to have the meeting, such and such, the results will be such and such." And it's going to be an opportunity, I think, for us in the city to upgrade a whole series of things that needed some updating. And I particularly like the idea of having a committee with people from other facets of the community on it, from development and things of that nature. The eventually, we would have to adopt, I believe, as a commission, the final plan. And they, they have in here that they want to hold a community meeting, they want to hold an informational meeting with the commission, another one of our work sessions probably. But, and also the deliverables are not only a project, but also the deliverables are going to be technology appropriate for what's going on now. So that'll be, that'll be important, be on our website for the city. So I think it's time we get on with this. We have some money into it. We also got, the city also got an additional, additional grant to help out with it. So I think this will be a, an important exercise for us. And if we start it this year, it'll be 2018 or maybe even 19 before we get the final product. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds, any comment?
Well, just, I agree with Commissioner Baldini and everything that he mentioned, and I'm glad that we will be doing an ad hoc committee and I'm glad that we're finally going forward with this. I think our Planning Commission has told us for like two years now that they're, they really want to do this and Tyler Clipp would come to all of our meetings saying that we need to get this done. So I'm glad that it's come up and now we have 18 months to wait. But I'm glad it's here and I'm glad we can offset the costs a little through a grant.
Commissioner Cam Bensy?
Just a quick question for staff. Sometimes you actually put the, I guess, the chart in here on how each of them did, but can I just ask the expertise and experience of, of this firm in terms of doing this type of work? Is it?
It gives the biography of each or the?
The scores.
Of the individuals working?
No, the scores. The scores on like?
Called the scores?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
What really stood out for this firm is an understanding of Michigan zoning law, which is important when dealing with our ordinance. The other firms, Duncan and Associates were out of Chicago with Cota Metrics. Placemakers are from Arizona, although they did our Third Street Form-Based Code for us. In Pivot Planning and Design, their low score just basically reflects the fact that they're a brand-new firm of people that didn't have a lot of an experience that tried for this. But McKenna's been around a long time. They're probably the, I'll easily, without embellishing, say they're the, probably within the top three oldest planning and design firms in the state of Michigan. Phil McKenna formed them, I think, in the late 60s, so. But really, we were impressed. And they also put together, they have a local contact through north of 45. Pat Coleman's helped us on a lot of our planning projects, has an understanding particularly of winter cities and winter city zoning issues. And although he plays a very minor role in the project, he provides us with a local point of contact and a lot of expertise with, with winter cities, which is going to help us quite a bit with our snow storage and parking and so on and so forth and some of the building design layouts. But, you know, long story short, they're a Michigan firm that, that's a very storied firm that does good work and they did stand out head and shoulders above the rest, even though the score doesn't necessarily reflect it.
Well, I think Mayor Pro Tem Baldini would agree with me that when we were on the Charter Commission, I remember we were going to hire a firm from Florida. And I thought, "Oh, my gosh." Yeah, yeah, it was, I mean, as far away as it could possibly be, but their expertise was so good that we could never have gotten through what we did without them having that background. So it, it is worth it. I'm glad that they are a Michigan firm in this case.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll vote on this motion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? It carries 7-0. Next, we move to number nine, Notice of Intent Resolution, Fiscal Year 2017 Capital Improvement Bonds. City Clerk, could you give us the background, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. In order to start the process of issuing capital improvement bonds for fiscal year 2017 projects, a resolution must be approved that will authorize a notice of intent to be published. The notice of intent serves as a 45-day referendum notice in accordance with Public Act 34. This public act states that if 10% of the registered electors, electors of the city file a referendum petition within 45 days of publication of the notice, then the bonds cannot be issued without voter approval. The resolution also authorizes that the city may reimburse itself for expenditures made prior to the actual issuance of the bonds. This language is needed in order to comply with federal tax laws for tax-exempt bonds. Projects proposed to be financed with this bond issue are attached. These are projects that have been budgeted and includes a Brownfield Authority project that will be paid by Brownfield TIF capture. A final amount tally will be presented before the bonds are actually issued. Fiscal effect, the debt service schedule will be produced when the bonds are issued. Recommendation: Approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $11 million for capital improvements and authorize the city clerk to sign, sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. First, $11 million seems a little high for our normal budget season. Could we have Chief Financial Officer Gary Simpson explain why?
Thank you. Just kidding. This is a lot higher than what we've normally been doing. This is a reflection of the new capital improvement process that we did last year. The six-year CIP was approved by the City Commission and we incorporated those projects into the city budget. A couple of things that are noteworthy, 2.5 million of the bond is going to be paid from the Lundin mining money that we receive each year. And 900,000 of this is also going to be a Brownfield bond, which will be paid for by the tax increment, tax, tax captures that we receive. This one is, the reason we're doing that is really what we consider the cutoff point to do a bond issue is about a million dollars. If it's anything less than that, it's really not cost-effective. So we allow the Brownfield to piggyback onto the city's bond issue to save them some cost. Couple of things we really weren't planning on for this bond issue, but came up sort of at the last minute. One issue was actually in last year's CIP, that was the water intake. We also have a fifth and Washington Street Stormwater Project and also the Nordic Bay Utilities. At the time, the CIP was approved, it was kind of a last-minute addition. So with all of that, that's why we're seeing a lot more. There's a lot more street projects. The past couple of years, we've just been doing the simp projects, basically. And now we're doing some actual reconstructions just because of the conditions the streets are in at this time.
Thank you. First, Mr. Ludenberger, you wish to address us on this item? Thank you, Gary.
Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave. here in Marquette. Again, I'm not, I'm not going to say this is a bad project or we shouldn't spend our money this way. I'm here to, I'm here to suggest that, yes, the roads need to be fixed. Again, as much as everybody just told me this is part of the Planning Commission master plan, there are no maps according to which roads we're going to be fixing and which ones are going to be passed over. And yes, in June, there would be a great time to go and revisit that. I look forward to seeing what is and is not covered after your tour. That'd be great in the city. But as far as the capital improvement plans go, I believe this was tied into the last, what's going on with Johnson Controls and how they're improving our facilities in town. On that note, I would like to say that electricity is coming a long way and, and the way computers are working, the way things are starting to be turned around, a lot of what we are spending money on, it looks like, are things that are going to be reducing our electrical costs to the city new power plant that we just promoted. So whatever we do as a city to reduce the cost that we pay the city Board of Light and Power extends the cost of that Board of Light and Power improvements to the residents and to other facilities. And that trickle-down economics, in that environment, I would like to see, if you could, a way to reduce our reliance on the Marquette Board of Light and Power. There's a lot of companies that I have investments in that are operating in many different communities. All of them have open electrical markets. Granted, we are a small community and we can't really sell profitably to Escanaba. I'm not looking to sell to the City of Marquette or to the City of, say, Harvey. But I can say that if the City of Marquette were to approve a non-binding agreement or something to bring in more renewable energy sources for electricity, things like the window treatments that you spent or that you approved $50,000 for could actually be solar panels that we plug our laptops in right there on the window. That's technology that's here today, right now. They're looking for markets to purchase these things. Things like the Nest system that you have at Best Buy. All of these are off-the-shelf, ready to go right now. I am curious how much we, as a city, are giving up our ability by guaranteeing these capital improvement projects now. I'm not saying $11 million to go fix roads is a bad idea. Go fix the roads with $11 million. If we're talking about electricity, though, for buildings, I have a better plan. And I'd like to talk to you about that. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we need a, someone to make a motion on this? Commissioner Baldini?
I would move that we approve a notice of intent resolution to issue and sell general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $11 million for capital improvements and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Baldini?
I'm glad that Gary took the opportunity to explain selling bonds costs money and by combining it, we really will save ourselves some money. This is for mostly streets, water, sewer. We will be this year addressing next month or the month after the Johnson Control Proposal on how to conserve energy for the city. But this one is, is here. I, I do have a question of our contractor, Gary, can I?
Please, Gary.
My, my question is, once we sell these bonds, $11 million, a good chunk of money, how much will our indebtedness be for the city? And not, not, not counting the Board of Light and Power, just what we, the city, have on the books. I know we pay some off every year and you've given us the chart, but I can't remember it offhand right now.
Yeah, we were about, I think it was about $55 million. Now we're adding on, you know, some significant bonds with the hospital project going on for the service center relocation and the roads and streets. And by adding another $11 million on, that would have made it 66. So we're probably talking at least 80 to probably 90 million total. But we do pay, we are going to be paying off a fair amount each year. So we still aren't near our statutory limits by any means, so we, we still have room to do that. And a lot of these bonds too have, it's not always tax, taxes that we're using to pay for this. A lot of it is in the utilities. And now with, particularly when you're talking about the hospital project, that's from tax captures and sometimes some other sources like the Lundin mining kind of source too. Also wanted to add too, I forgot to mention, but this morning, we also identified a bond that we issued in 2009 that is a good candidate for refunding. Right now, if we refund it now, we're looking at potential savings of approximately $35,000 a year for the next seven to eight years. So we'll be wrapping that into this one as well, as long as the market conditions hold up.
And also, our rating is still double A?
Yes, sir, we're still at double A. I'm going to be having a phone call with the standards and pores people in the next few weeks to hopefully reaffirm that. So, but everything's looking good so far.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, any comment? Comments anywhere else? Commissioner Cam Bensy?
Just, there's certainly projects in here I have voted against, but I guess in viewing this, to get a better rate for the ones I did support, this is somewhat like our, our budget sessions where in order to pay the bills and move forward, you have to vote for it. So I will be voting for it for that reason.
Thank you. Comments, any? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Cam Bensy?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plurid?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. That carries 7-0. We move to our last new item, new business item of the evening, which is a resolution of necessity at 1318 Presque Isle Avenue. City Clerk, could we have the background, please?
Thank you, sir. Background. At its meeting on August 8th, 2016, the City Commission approved the six-year capital improvements plan for 2017 to 2022, which included a Wright Street reconstruction project and a Presque Isle Avenue reconstruction project. The Presque Isle Avenue reconstruction project proposal includes upgrading the intersection of Presque Isle and Fair Avenues with a roundabout as recommended in the City of Marquette traffic study. In order to construct a roundabout at this location, additional right-of-way must be acquired by the city. Reasonable efforts have been made to reach an agreement with Valakuba LLC for the purchase of a portion of their property at 1318 Presque Isle Avenue. However, staff has been unable to reach a mutual agreement with the owners. Act 87 of 1980 provides procedures for condemnation, acquisition, or exercise of eminent domain of real or personal property by public agencies. If the property is to be acquired by a public agency through this exercise, a resolution of necessity, necessity approved by the public agency's governing body is required to commence the process. The city attorney has prepared the attached resolution of necessity for commission approval. Fiscal effect, the appraised value of the portion of the property is $8,900. The Presque Isle Avenue and Wright Street reconstruction projects were approved under fiscal year 2016-17 budget. Funding will come from the 2016-17 bond package. Recommendation: Approve the resolution of necessity for acquisition of a portion of 1318 Presque Isle Avenue from Valakuba LLC and authorize the city clerk to, to sign the resolution. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion for this item? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we approve the resolution of necessity for acquisition of a portion of property at 1318 Presque Isle Avenue from Valakuba LLC and authorize the city clerk to sign the resolution.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier? Mr. Frazier? Commissioner Frazier, you second that? You second it? Okay. Comments? Commissioner Conley?
Well, it's always best to arrive at a settlement before the court process starts, but we need to keep moving with this project and we need to make this step. Hopefully, we'll be able to resolve it before it hits the court. But this is the, the necessary steps that the City Commission needs to take.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, anything?
One of the many subsidies to do to keep the project growing.
One of the many subsidies to do to keep the project going, like Commissioner Conley said, so this will hopefully keep the project going. And thank you, Commissioner Conley, for saying that, because I couldn't pronounce the name without a tongue twister.
Any other comments? Commissioner Reynolds?
Just a question. I didn't see this. I think this got emailed to us late sometime this afternoon, and I didn't see it until after I was sitting here. Is there a reason as to why we're doing it so last minute and just getting added to the agenda and we can't wait the two weeks that we could have it in our packet?
Well, I can answer that. Yes. I had originally had it on the agenda for tonight, but I'd had a meeting, we all did, with the property owner last week, and we were hoping for a resolution or an answer to that discussion. We, I assume that we made progress. I assume that we conceded some points, or I know we conceded some points. And I was waiting to hear from them. And I kind of waited till the last minute, just in case I got a call or just in case they responded to our city attorney who was acting on our behalf. And when they didn't respond, I opted to put it back on the agenda because of the timeliness of what we're doing. You know, we're in our construction season now. We need to act sooner than later, and delaying would just delay our construction project that much longer, not to mention that we already approved the contracts with the contractor for this project as well. And so we're trying to time the whole process with the contractors, the property. And eminent domain is not the route I prefer to take, but I needed to, I wanted to get it started just in case the conversation did not progress.
Okay. Follow-up question. So I don't know when we added it or re-added it back, but did we, are the owners aware that this was added to tonight's agenda?
I don't know that. I did not inform them. But I don't know if Jen can answer that question or not. Or Ron, maybe you can help. Go to work, Ron.
Well, we didn't inform them. We communicated with counsel for the other, for the property owner, didn't get a response. And as city manager said, there was a meeting, I didn't attend it, but my office did. And I thought we made great progress, as manager said, made some changes, made some concessions. That worked for both sides. It was fine. And every indication was that was, that was workable. But we didn't get a response, and this had to get on. As I said the last time we had one of these up, it doesn't change anything in the sense that we can still negotiate a resolution. That could look a little bit different than this original plan. But the city manager wanted to get it on because of the timeliness of the project, as he just outlined. But, yeah, we've, I tried to communicate, and so did my partner, with counsel on the other side. Just maybe she wasn't available or was out of town, I don't know. But we didn't get there, and city manager decided to put it back on tonight.
Okay, just my comment now. I'm fairly uncomfortable with adding things last minute. I think this has come up before in the past, that I've always feel uncomfortable with adding something last minute, not knowing if the owners do know about this or not. I feel very uncomfortable considering the last eminent domain situation that we undergone and the owners being here. So I will be voting no, because this is the last minute. We do not know if the owners necessarily knew. And I feel like this is such a small piece of property, and to think that we have to do it this way this quickly seems unreasonable to me and means we didn't plan well enough. So that's why I'll be voting no.
Commissioner Plard?
I think there's a couple of points that need to be brought out. First of all, with the hospital, people were here telling us about construction, and we've talked about a lot of construction tonight. There's a lot of construction going on in the city. And that lends an urgency to this particular project, because if we were to wait even one more month, we may not be able to get the construction companies to be able to complete this project and get it done. If we wait one more month, it's hard to project how much more the project is going to cost. So in a sense, yeah, I'm not one who wants to use eminent domain either. That would be my last, my last resort. But at the same time, I get a perception and that there's some foot dragging in this. And when I listen to our city attorney talk about, and our city manager talk about a meeting, and I was aware of that meeting, and a meeting that took place that worked very well, and then no results, no action from their part. I get the feeling there's foot dragging in this that could cost the taxpayers a lot of money in the city of Marquette. Because, again, if we, if this project is delayed a month, two months, three months, the project cost is going to go up. And I know that our city staff do, nobody in the city staff or the city commission wants that to happen. We don't want to pay any more money than we need to pay for anything we're putting money out for. And so, you know, we do want to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. How long, if there's a, if there is foot dragging going on, how long do we allow foot dragging to go on before we come to eminent domain? I think my perception of this also is that if we approve this, and I'm going to vote for it because of this, it gives the city another tool to work with with negotiations. And as our city attorney has mentioned, this does not have to be the final answer. Negotiations can take place anytime. I don't know of anybody in the city and the city staff that wants to use eminent domain, but things have to move forward. And it's been that way on a couple of other city, or eminent domain issues, and it's that way in this eminent domain issue as well. Personally, I hope that we don't have to use eminent domain in the end, that we can get legitimate negotiations done, and the value of the property, the owners realize the value of the property, and things work well, and we save money in construction. But it's something that, as our city manager said, this needs to be done now. And that's why I'm going to support this.
Any other comments? I say I would have to agree with Commissioner Plard. This has been ongoing conversation with the property owner, so it's no surprise that we're not where we are at this point. Seeing no other discussion, we're going to take a roll call vote on this. City Clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Cam Benzey?
No.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldini?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. Passes 5-2. Okay, next we move to our second public comment of the evening. Again, a chance to address the commission. You have three minutes. Name, address, if you haven't already given it. I'm going to open public comment. Would anybody wish to address the commission at this point? Anybody?
Hello, Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave. Here in Marquette. I'm going to start off by saying thank you to all who served, who never made it back home. I have a lot of family members who are lost in combat, and it's very appropriate that this weekend was very well-received here in Marquette. We tend to do a lot of parades and a lot of activities, and we forget to, we forget about them because there's so many of them. And I'd like to say that really, city staff and city groups all around the community, you do a fantastic job on all the projects that you undertake, and thank you very much. Thank you. Second, I guess I'd like to talk about that 6i, the used four-wheel-drive pluck, truck, plow truck. And I bring it up because I've come in here before saying, hey, there's snow being pushed into my driveway, and I'm not the only one, and can we get something that gets this out of the way? I'm hoping this might be in the right direction. I hope it's not one of the big, major, huge plows that scrapes the ground and puts all the snow in front of my driveway. But at the same time, you've spent a lot of money on a lot of things, and the amount of money that I was looking for as a crew that would go around in the four or five times that we get in the wintertime would be less than that plow truck. And in that sense, I'd like to see more of a seasonal employment where we try to help the city commission or the city residents out. I have three new elderly residents across the street from me. Just that kind of concept, where they're not going to be plowing their street, their driveway, at least not at the very end of the road. So we, as a city, that's one thing I'd like to see come up more of. Also, I'd like to point out that a lot of projects that have been proposed are more of a quick fix, Band-Aid type thing. Recently, I got a flat tire in my car. I'm not going to get a new car because I have a flat tire. I'm going to fix my flat tire. And in that sense, I am working on the knowledge of what we have wrong today can have a simple, quick fix. If we move forward and project out the cost analysis, we lose a lot of benefits that go in with that. And I bring this up because of the Johnson Controls, and I'm really concerned about it, because last week, you guys had a proposal for the brown field that we are using as a municipal center or municipal garbage center. I would love to put a new road in there, some wind turbines, some solar panels, some companies like a supermarket. North side of town has no real businesses. And in that sense, I would love to see a project that goes forward and uses electricity off the main, off the lake, and uses it in a community right there as a small project. If that's a small project for the brown field or if that's a bigger project for BLP, or if that's something the city just ignores, that is something I would like to do. And my time is up. But I do want to say, last year, I proposed a flower heart, flowers. I haven't heard back. So here are a bunch of sunflowers for you guys. Please pass them around. If I'm digging in the ground and I get arrested, this is the reason why. Thanks.
Thank you.
Frank Jeff Verito, these are my opinions. April 10th and 27th, Mr. Plard accused me of groundless accusations and not clarifying what I need people to consider, much of which was stated clearly or was deducible. He further accused me of saying this board dawdles on some issues such as the Lighthouse property in Cliff's Dull and rushes others like the Trollehoff. And Mr. Campana rushing so fiercely on the hospital entrance that he forgot to ask the members for their comments. Items this board are accused of rushing are often those, are often who's who items that don't directly benefit the public, whereas Lighthouse Park and Cliff's Dull involve public accessies and parcels that we, the people, own. While Mr. Plard comes across as a professional speaker, it's evident that some of his rebuts aren't thought through. This board was accused of dawdling in the Lighthouse Park because no one pressured outside entities to get a move on while the lie persisted that we were to receive the property for relinquishing an acre of beachfront. Years later, we still can't enjoy our park or the Cliff's Dull site, which remains a polluted eyesore, while we keep testing for contaminants that needed removal decades ago. Is this not dawdling? Our public use of the ORDOC is a third example pending bottom lands analyses that we've grown gray waiting for. Please differentiate the natures of the items I accuse this board of rushing versus dawdling on. Generally, they rush those that benefit the powers that be or chosen developers. Mr. Plard claims my comments take away from public stuff, while in truth, these items are public stuff, as is the behavior of this board. His rebuts actually evoke the remarks that he claims aren't public stuff. He complains to me publicly and privately that I waste this board's time, that his practice of rebutting, sometimes to what's already been explained, prompts my necessity to respond, wasting more time. In fact, I'd have taken tonight's meeting off. May 8, Mr. Plard said I was lucid at the beginning, then not. He's our new arbiter of lucidity and what public comment is for by his definition. While he looks attentive, he seems to listen selectively. Destructive emails and utterances only repeat the cycle into ignazia for all involved. Also, on May 8, for the second time since Mr. Campana's reminder, members continue to use first names. He was made aware of this last time, meaning we're safe to say that he imposes rules based on who's who. Again, this would be fine if he chose to treat all participants equally. This may also result from his alleged inability to fully absorb what's said in his presence. Finally, on May 8, Mr. Frazier motioned, he said, to make Mr. Conley happy. Although some degree of humor is welcome, we don't motion to make people happy. We motion at the most appropriate time, which can occur prematurely. He also said people were sneaking down the south beach with chainsaws and that he enjoys nature. Sawing public trees is illegal, which all seven members went out of their ways to accommodate at public expense. Several of our members exhibit no appreciation for nature or the value of a natural place.
Anyone else?
Again, good evening. You're in Malachi, Marquette Drive. Continuing on a more happier note, you know, we only get three minutes. Kind of hard to put all your thoughts in one segment. Continuing with the added voice with the Board of Light and Power, their $60 million project, of which they borrowed $65 million, they still have roughly almost $5 million in reserves, so way under budget, as I said earlier, and the ratings start running. The other project that's being proposed in Nagani, per kilowatt and per engines, is coming up tentatively much, much higher. And they're only single fuel rather than dual fuel engines. So the Board of Light and Power has done due diligence in managing the monies that were expanded to that project. Also, I want to thank the city in appropriating the $11 million for additional expenditures to keep our city in a proper maintenance and probably needs more, but there's always, that's always a good start. And so I had an opportunity to go downstate this past weekend, and the traffic is incredibly ferocious over there. It really appreciates and humbles myself to come back to Marquette and enjoy the fresh air, enjoy the camaraderie, enjoy the happiness of the city of Marquette and the surrounding areas, and people communicating with you. When you're downstate, people look at you like, if you make eye contact, that you want something from them. And that's not the case here. So I thank you for the happiness that everybody in the community has placed this part of the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment for the evening. We're going to move to comments from the commissioner, from the commissioners. We're going to start with Commissioner Conley.
Thank you. I'm going to muse for a minute. I read an article in the newspaper about a maintenance unit of the Marine Corps rebuilding an old helicopter, but they were having trouble getting parts. The chief of maintenance found a fabricator using 3D printing that made that part that was out of manufacture, and it was delivered to him after a Monday phone call by Friday morning. And it's this kind of manufacturing, this fabricating, that can be done on a small scale and done in communities like Marquette. Fabricators will only come because this is a very high-tech endeavor. They're only going to come to communities that are livable and desirable to live in. And so as we strive to make this a livable community, walkable, attractive, we emphasize our recreational opportunities. Employers of the future, the small-time fabricators, the 3D printers, will be able to bring their employees here to live and enjoy the quality of life that we do. So although big-time manufacturing has gone the way, it's possible for us to have, to further expand our economy in manufacturing with the new technologies. So I think we need to keep our, keep our eye on making this a livable community and being attractive to high-tech employers like this down the road. Remember, we're not just talking about next year. We're talking about 20, 30, 40 years from now and keeping this community viable. That said, I drove south on Front Street from Berega to Fisher Street, and I think I need dental work now. I wondered if that, if that section of road is somewhere on the improvement list.
Front Street, you said?
Yes, sir. Is that, is that ours or is that M.Dot's? Is that a business route?
That's ours.
It's ours. We own it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I can't tell you where it is on the CIP or if it is, but we're, we did some work closer to Berega just a few years ago, but I don't know. I can't give you an answer right now for the rest of it.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Plard?
Thank you, Mr. Verito, for answering my question that I'd asked in the last meeting about the difference between dawdling and rushing too fast. I don't agree with your answer, but at least you gave me one. I do want to know from you why it's appropriate for you to draw conclusions about what I favor or don't favor based on your perceptions, but it's not proper for me to do that based on my perceptions. Beyond that, I was also glad I was out on the Beyond that, I was also glad I was out in the town on Saturday and glad to enjoy the five hours of summer we've had so far. And actually, I did see the temperature rise to 80 degrees for about 10 minutes, which was great. I still hold out hope and I think that it's going to happen, but a lot of people were out and about in the city and a lot of people were out and about on Sunday for sure. I didn't get out on Monday, so I can't speak about Monday, but even with a little rain, I really didn't stop people. A lot of good things going on and Mr. Ludenberger is correct in this area. Honoring those who have fallen and not coming back from the wars that have been fought in our behalf is very, very important to us in the central Upper Peninsula, as it is in many other places, but I think it's extremely important. And I don't know of anyone, and I know a lot of people, but I don't know of anyone who forgot the efforts that were made and I also do appreciate all the efforts. We'll never forget the efforts that were made for us. We're able to have this kind of meeting in the way we have it because of sacrifices that were made and again, I thank those people as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, it's been quite a short meeting for the first time in a while, so I'm not going to dawdle, but the only thing that I wanted to take note of is on the consent agenda, we approved the spring fermentation celebration, so it's our first thing down at Lower Harbor this year and I'm the volunteer coordinator, so if any of my commissioners feel like passing out beer to people this weekend on Saturday, let me know. Other than that, I was just going to say happy birthday to Commissioner Kembensee.
Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to comment on the snowplow because I wanted to commend the staff. We had in the budget, if you remember, we appropriated $360,000, I believe, to buy a new snowplow and through some reading of surplus equipment, they were able to obtain one that they say is in very good shape for $36,000. And so, I want to commend them. I think that's a good chunk of money for us and I want to commend the staff for finding that and that's very good. The -- also, I know we have a budget session coming up and I hear more and more on the news that there's going to be an infrastructure bill. I don't know what that means, okay, in Washington. Not everybody does. So, we may have to think about if there's going to be money there for us to do some other projects and how that's going to be done. I've heard some things and some of them really worry me because when I was with the International Joint Commission for two countries, these things were being charred elsewhere, like leasing out your water and sewer lines. They don't work, by the way. Initially, they make money, but eventually they end up, people abandon them and you're stuck with them. So, but in terms of roads and things of that nature, it might be something that we could do and look at. We hear a great deal about maybe there's something better out there. There's always something better and you know, that old saying, "Perfect is the enemy of the done." There's a lot of things out there being proposed, but when you go and read about them, they're not ready for the market yet, okay? And I know Tesla has some new matter for their roofs, which they'll install, but when you call Tesla or read about it, they say maybe another year or two years, but it was out there like, oh, Tesla's got it and it's going. Well, so I think we have to keep moving forward and even though you may say, gee, five years from now or 10 years from now, there might be something really better. We've seen some news recently in the paper, in the Mining Journal, and heard it on the news about our Chamber of Commerce. The community calendar is coming online and it's only going to work if we all take part of it and use a part of it. Oh, I see our mayor's got some things. I'll leave the chamber stuff to him then. But that is something and then also the other project. But the calendar one could be a real benefit for the community, the broader community, but we all have to participate and put the information on there. If we don't, it obviously fails, so thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Glad we're fixing this street around town. We all know the city needs some maintenance here and there, so I'm glad we're doing some maintenance in some areas. And I've been told by many people, hopefully we're doing some maintenance at the island on the dirt road out there. I've been talking to the city manager about that. He said it's in the process of being done eventually, so I think that's good. As far as people cutting down trees, I mean, like I said, people have sneaked down, cut down. I heard about some guy cutting down a tree nearby my house just to get a picture of the Coast Guard station and somebody said, well, you shouldn't be cutting down that tree. I said, well, it's blocking my picture. It's like, okay, well, you shouldn't be cutting down that tree. But those people, you know, taxes on Lake Shore where they're on that Lake Shore are usually higher because they enjoy the view of the water and they enjoy, so you know, there's no reason why they can't have a better view and that was the city manager's decision to do that and I don't discourage them for that. We didn't vote on it. He just said there's a company in town that could do it, save the city some money and they did it and it was done, so I think it's a good thing to do. And I do enjoy nature, melt, hunt in waterfalls all the time and checking out the woods and we had summer, like people said, for a couple days last week and then it's back to fall again. We should have summer again and the beaches are open. We should have beaches available to use by July, I think, if we're lucky. Just like all the boaters wanted to go in earlier, like early in May and late April when the weather was beautiful and then there was no merinos open, so they didn't go in the water. Now, now they're all in the water and the weather's gone to heck again, so they're all frustrated, so. As far as power, Mr. Ludenberger, talk to BLP's board. I mean, they're the ones to talk to about, you know, your power questions and stuff. Talk to, go to their board meeting and talk to them. They're more knowledgeable than we are about everything and they're the ones that can answer all your questions for you, so I would recommend talking to them. And I mean, wind farms are something that's been discussed for a long time and everybody we heard of, talking to other people, those wind farms have been abandoned all over the place. They're just not profitable for some people and they're supposed to be maintained and stuff like that, so they'll answer all your questions about that. We're not the experts on that. BLP is the experts on that, so don't look to us for power questions and hopefully we'll enjoy a nice -- June's coming around the corner, so maybe the weather will get nicer, but I think it'll be nice by the Fourth of July. Commissioner Reynolds, if we volunteered to be a waiter, do we get the taste test or do we just have to be waiters?
You do. You volunteer for four hours and then you get to enjoy the event.
Thank you. I'm not going to sing to you, but I do want to wish you a happy birthday. Commissioner Kembensee?
When you get in your 40s, you just don't really have birthdays anymore, right?
I was just supposed to admit that. That's the way you're on. I have to say you're 39.
Yeah. No, I too would like to thank our soldiers who served our country and did not make it home. That is the true reason for Memorial Day and I went to the service of the Marquette Park Cemetery and it was quite lovely with a lot of people there. Eminent Domain, I just looked. I didn't even actually get to open the attachments. I received that email at 3:39 PM today and, you know, that's disheartening and I guess my message to the hospital, hopefully into helping them create more business locally and having people shop locally and stay locally. I think it's the same for the city. I think we need to be aware of how our actions, when we do stuff like this, come off because it comes down to a communication issue as well as a trust issue. And we did not have to put this on the agenda tonight. We could have put it on the agenda. We've got a work session coming up. This is going to not go well. I think there's already a perception that we're not listening close enough to the community. Locals feel like their voice is getting lost. I think we need to tune in a little bit more right now to how people are feeling and what our actions are doing to make them feel that way. Some may feel that way on their own, but I think this agenda item number 10 tonight, I mean, I think this is going to really not bode well for us, so I didn't vote yes on I guess we'll see how it ends up and other than that, I did put on a pin that I received in my first year on the, I think it was my second year on the city commission, from UPTON, the UP Diabetes Network and Outreach Network. And they wanted to promote the month designated to diabetes and they asked me to be their role model and I remember thinking, I don't want to wear that, you know, on my shirt. I manage my disease fine. I'm in control. Now I have to wear it outwardly and people have to know. And with the passing of Representative John Keevila two weeks ago, I think it hit me harder than a lot of people simply because I could identify probably with a lot of feelings that he had and I think so many of us, if we would have known, we would have done what we could to help him. And so, I think our community has been very kind. I went downstate last week and there were signs all the way out through the district and that means a lot. It means we live in a place that truly cares about people and I think, you know, that's something that whenever we go downstate as a delegation, you know, people see that and it's something to take pride in, so we'll miss his leadership, but tonight I did want to wear that pin in memory and symbolism of the late representative.
Thank you. I also would like to mention Memorial Day. It is, we do honor the men and women who've served in the military, who gave all, some many who were injured and did not come back. Commissioner Baldini did mention the community calendar. It was rolled out this month and it's a go-to point for events that's happening in the county or if you care to look up what's happening in the county, I think this is really going to catch on. It's going to be very popular. If you want to know what's happening, you look it up and whatever your interest is, you can find, you can narrow it down to that interest. The chamber also has, was just awarded a, almost a quarter of a million dollar grant to help grow creative jobs. This came from the state of Michigan and the purpose, the thrust of it was to create job creative initiative process to retain and attract talent in Michigan, so they have money to use and hopefully create positive things for the city of Marquette. I hate to beat a dead horse, but I'm going to just real quick say this and this is the last time I'm going to talk about Lake Street cutting trees. I don't know if the reasons ever, one of the reasons ever given for it, but the reasons the trees were cut there was people were using that for their private toilet in the summer and homeless people were sleeping there, so two good reasons not to have the thick brush that was there. Those were the reasons. Lastly, Mr. Ludenberger mentioned Charter might be cutting us off. I've read that article. I thought that we are paying to have them continue. I'm going to ask my city manager if he has any more information on that. I'm done, city manager. You're up to bat. Okay, but as soon as I answer this question, I have a couple more comments, so don't slam the hammer right away, okay? No, we're, Charter quit broadcasting for us some time ago. I think the recent media attention was on Nagani and they are losing their Charter assistance for their broadcasts of their meetings. We continue to broadcast our own meetings over a public accessible channel, 191, on Charter and as far as I know, that's going to continue. On that note, we've reached out to Nagani to see if maybe there's something we can do together or some way we can help them as they move forward in broadcasting their meetings because I suspect that over time, the other meetings that are being broadcast will also be cut short by Charter and some of the changes they're making. Okay? All right.
Keep talking.
Keep talking. Thank you. I wanted to mention that I attended a meeting today on the progress of the new service The, excuse me, the building is very much complete. I sent an email out last week with some incorrect information that I thought that we would be moved in by the end of the month. That isn't true. However, the construction and the construction people should be out by the first week of July. Vehicle maintenance is already moving into that building. Exterior painting will begin today or as soon as the weather is permissible. The fuel station will be complete June 9th. That's the canopy that we talked about. Date of substantial completion will also be June 9th. Paving and striping will be June 12th through the 23rd. We'll begin buying furniture around the same time. The solid storage has been, building has been started if you drive by there and that should be completed by August 10th. And I, in between that time, the rest of the city staff will begin moving in piecemeal as the furniture is brought in and as we can move people around and I would like to consider an open house and/or ribbon-cutting sometime in the first part of August if we can do that. So, by then, we should be very well moved in and open for business and probably more capable of having a decent open house. One last thing, just to mention that, you know, we talked about eminent domain a little bit. I just wanted, I know I joke with Ron, but the city attorney's office has been working very hard to try to resolve these issues as well as Jen, the assistant city manager and, you know, it's, I just want to take a moment to just thank them because I kid them all the time and I take pokes at them, but it's often, I'm making it all up and I hate to do that, but you know, they've been working very hard to try to resolve these issues, including the property on Seventh Street. Eminent Domain is our last, our last effort after we think all else is not working out well and by no means is it meant to irritate anybody or to cause any problems, so thank you, Ron, for all you do and maybe we'll resolve all of these issues without having to take any more legal steps. Thank you. We are adjourned.